Thank you very much for everybody who's come along to this webinar where we'll be looking at gov.uk domain names. Please be joined by Sandra Low and Tim Willett from the Parish Council Domains Helper Service, who've been providing a lot of support on this over the last, well, I was going to say last year, it's more than last year, last couple of two or three years. And so I will now hand over to Sandra to make a start. Also, just if you do have any questions or that you want to ask, either there will be an opportunity at the end, or otherwise add them to the chat and they will try and answer as many as they're going along. So over to you, Sandra. Thank you.
Thanks, Anders. So hello, everyone. I thank you for joining us today. It's really good to see so many people have taken the time to come along. And then Mondays are always busy with everyone. So as Anders said, my name is Sandra and I'm joined by my colleague, Tim. We are both from the Parish Council Domains Helper Service and we are a team within Government Central Digital and Data Office. And that's the CDDO. So our aim is to make the UK government more efficient and secure digitally. And part of this is to get all UK government organisations at every level onto .gov.uk domains. And that includes parish councils. And that's where the Domains Helper Service comes in. So our session today is all about .gov.uk domains, what they are, why your council should consider having one and how to move over. And when you've moved over, how to get the best of your .gov.uk domain. Let's have a quick look at the agenda. So these are the things we're going to be talking about today. The first part of the presentation covers the what and why of .gov.uk domains. And this is followed by the how, how we can help you move to .gov.uk domain should you decide to. Then we'll move on to talk about getting the best out of your .gov.uk domain. Along the way, there'll be a few polls for you to get involved in. And of course, there'll be plenty of time for questions. As Anders said, if you want to ask us a question, pop it in the chat. We're happy to see hands up as well because we like to run sessions as fairly informal. So if something does come to mind, then pop your hand up. But there are various places across the presentation where we'll be stopping to have questions. So before we start then, I have a first poll for you. And I think Tim is in charge of the polls.
Let's give this a go.
Okay, oh, I can see it also. It looks good. So we'd love to know what motivated you to come along to the webinar today. We've got some answers on the slide. I think they are, I'm curious, I wanted to know about more. My council is very interested in moving over. I've heard that having a .gov.uk domain is mandatory. I'm hoping to be able to persuade my colleagues that .gov.uk domain is a good thing. And I need persuading that .gov.uk domain is a good thing. So let's have a look. So we've, I think 100% of people have actually answered. Thank you very much. So where are we now? So quite interesting results. Can we share the results, Tim?
Yes, can you, shall I end the poll?
Let's have a look. It's got sixty-three.
Couple of seconds. I think we've got nearly everyone.
Yeah.
Sixty-four, three, two, one, and poll. Share. There we go.
Okay, can everyone see the results? Or can they just see what's on my screen? I'm not sure.
I think everyone can see, hopefully.
Yep.
Okay, brilliant. So great answers, everybody. So lots of people coming along because they're curious. And that their council is also interested in moving it out over. And people hoping to persuade their colleagues and lots of people hoping to be persuaded themselves. We have a few people that have said about a .gov.uk being mandatory. So I'd like to tackle that response straight away. So having a .gov.uk domain isn't mandatory. And at the moment, there are no plans to make it. So it would take a massive legal change to create any sort of legality behind it. So it is not mandatory, but it is considered good practice. And you'll see that in the Practitioner's Guide, which you'll come to a little bit later on. And hopefully, all the benefits that we talk about today will persuade you that even if it isn't mandatory, it's a great thing to do. Thanks for taking part in that. So I'm going to move on to our next slide. And that's all about what a domain is. And that's over to Tim to talk through that.
Great, thanks, Sandra. Afternoon, everybody. So we're talking about gov.uk domains here. And some of you may already be very clear on what a domain is. Some of you may be a bit less certain or might be confused as to the difference between a domain and a website perhaps. So just to give an analogy for this, your domain is your front door for the internet. So firstly, it's your address. It's where people can find you online, find your council. And all visitors to your website and all emails to and from come through your domain, through your front door. Your website is actually built and stored somewhere. And it's then connected to the internet via your front door, sorry, via your domain. And then all your email accounts, again, they're set up and they're stored somewhere. And then your emails come and go through your domain front door. So that's what your domain is. It's your address and your doorway to the internet. So why might you want a gov.uk front door? So we've picked out a few key benefits of gov.uk domains. These will be relevant for those of you who are trying to find out more, thinking about moving across. But yeah, it might also be useful to know if you already have a gov.uk domain, you know, what are the advantages? So firstly, just to talk about security. So you'll see we'll be keeping, keeping the door analogy going. There are two main ways that a gov.uk domain is more secure than other domains such as .org.uk or .co.uk domains. So firstly, all the companies that are able to set up gov.uk domains on your behalf, they have to meet various security criteria set out by our team in central government. So this includes things like cyber essentials. They have to have that certification, which means that they themselves are well protected. And if they're well protected, it means that your information is protected as well. There are also criteria in place for some of the services which they set up for you. So for example, if they set up email addresses for you, then they'll need to put in place various validation systems that will help to protect your council from spoofing and phishing attacks, as they're called. And then it'll also help to protect people who you're emailing so that they, they know that it's coming from a trusted sender. So that's the first way. The companies involved, the setup gov.uk domains, they have to meet security criteria. The second way that a gov.uk domain is more secure is that it's protected by teams in central government. So there's, there are teams whose job it is to scan across gov.uk domains and look both for threats and for vulnerabilities. So that includes a team in our own department in CDDO. They scan for vulnerabilities. So if you have a security weakness that is visible to the internet, they can pick that up and they'll let your registrar know, the company that looks after your domain. And then there's also the National Cyber Security Centre. So they use scanning tools to look for threats. So they're kind of looking, the other side, they're looking for threat actors, common criminals that they know about. And they look for any suspicious activity that's focused on gov.uk domains. So these two things together, they're important protections for your council and for your community. It is important to say, we can't always prevent human error. And that is a big factor in cybersecurity. But these protections will make your domain, your council, less vulnerable to data breaches, phishing attacks, and the loss of trust and reputation that can follow from those. So that's the first benefit around security. Secondly, then, a gov.uk domain helps to support your council's credibility. So let's have a look at that now.
So there are a couple of questions in the chat. I don't know if you want to tackle those. So Keith has said, will .gov.uk be mandatory and when? I think we tackled that and there is, there is a no for that. And then there's a question about the registrar list. Why is it limited and doesn't include our current provider, who is a large UK company?
So in terms of the registrar list, there are, there are two lists involved. There's the long list of registrars. I say long, it's about 160 companies who are approved to set up gov.uk domains. And they are the ones who have to meet those security criteria that I was just talking about. So if your current provider isn't on that list, it will be because they have, because they can't, or they've decided not to sign up to meet those security criteria. There is also a shortlist that we've been working with of, of registrars who have got a lot of experience of working with parish councils. And we'll talk about that a bit later. So hopefully that answers your question. And you know, happy to be more specific if you want to, you know, pass your, your, your current provider's name. And we can sort of talk that through.
So there was another question about the monitoring. How does it differ from usual software monitoring packages?
So it's a different kind of monitoring, I think. This is sort of rapidly getting into areas that are more technical than I'm able to answer. So there are teams which scan actively across gov.uk domains in the way that a software monitoring package wouldn't necessarily. But Jackie, I'm afraid I can't really sort of get more technical than that. Different type of monitoring, I would say. And Dave, can we use gov.uk, sorry, gov Wales in the same way? Yes, absolutely. If you're based, if you're a community council based in Wales, then you can apply for a gov.uk, sorry, a gov Wales domain. It is a different team that manages, manages those, that is devolved. But you know, a lot of the benefits that we'll be talking about will be similar for gov.uk, sorry, similar for gov Wales. I've been saying gov.uk so many times over the past year. I find it difficult to stop halfway through. Okay, brilliant. Thanks. And a message from Olivia about posting in the Q and A. We could try that as well. Happy to, happy to give that a go if that, if that would be preferable.
Okay.
Thanks, Sandra. Shall we move on to credibility then? So generally speaking, you know, I think we're all aware that more and more of our business is being handled online. That's whether that's working with each other within councils or working with, you know, our communities, other external stakeholders. And I guess this links to the debate at the moment around having online meetings as well. So more and more of our business will be online. So we can be reaching our communities instantly via our websites, through our emails. And then the flip side of that is that our communities have an expectation that they, that all the information that they want to know about their council will be available at the click of the mouse to them. So when it comes to working online, there is a further expectation from our communities that as, you know, grassroots government organisations, the communications that they get from their parish councils will be safe, legitimate, and can be trusted. And also, it should be easy for our communities to find us online. So they shouldn't have to be guessing whether a website that they're looking at is actually owned by a council, or if an email that they receive is actually from a councillor. And this is where a gov.uk domain can help. So unlike other domains I've mentioned, like .co.uk or .org.uk domains, gov.uk domains are only available for UK government departments, government organisations. And the ability to have one is strictly controlled. So that means any visitor to your website, any recipient of an email from you will know for sure that they're engaging with an official part of government. So your communications are recognised as legitimate. People who receive an email, they'll always understand the capacity in which they're being contacted. Secondly, having a gov.uk domain is a sign of good practice. It's a signal of a commitment to professionalism. And our communities can see that their council is a recognisable part of government, which comes with a sense of trust and legitimacy. So that's the credibility part then. And then there's also some efficiency benefits associated with gov.uk domains, which I'll hand over to Sandra for.
Thanks, Tim. So there are a couple of important points about efficiency that we'd like to mention. Let's look at ownership and control. Firstly, I want to talk about emails. So having admin control over email accounts makes things a lot easier for clerks and their councils. For example, the management of leavers and joiners can all be done centrally. And new official email accounts are quick to set up. And the opposite, accounts that are no longer needed are easy to close down. And importantly, when that happens, council information can be retained. If your council members use personal email addresses, however, then when they leave, any correspondence that might be needed for future purposes will also leave with them. And recipients of future emails from those personal email addresses may mistakenly believe they are still being contacted by a member of the council. I want to also talk about some mandatory tasks. So things like freedom of information or subject access requests. These are well known for being time and resource heavy. And tasks such as this can also be managed more efficiently with a .gov.uk domain and emails. So required information will be easy to access and councils and clerks will not need to worry about surrendering information from their personal accounts. Tasks such as this are managed centrally and not on an individual basis. The last benefit on this slide, although it's kind of relatively minor, is something that we think will give a little bit of peace of mind. So it's common practice to renew ownership of a domain when a contract comes to an end. It might be done every year or two. If your council lets go or forgets to renew any other kind of domain, for example, a .org.uk domain, it can be sold on to someone else. This is not true of a .gov.uk domain. They are only ever issued once and will never be sold to anyone else. So as a last point about the why of .gov.uk domains, I'd like to quickly mention the Practitioner's Guide. So last year, the team worked with the Joint Panel for Accountability in Governance, that's JPG, alongside the SLCC and now to look at the guidance around .gov.uk domains. As a result, you may have seen that the Practitioner's Guide for 2024 now comes with strengthened language around .gov.uk. It states that our community suppliers and partners can now reasonably expect a local council to have a .gov.uk domain. If any of you have recently been through an audit, you may have also been given that recommendation. The guide also states that all councils should at least have one central council-owned email address. And it recommends that this is a .gov.uk email. We are working again with the JPG Technical Working Group this year and into next to further strengthen and expand the guidance. And future changes are already on the way. So I'm going to do a little pause for questions about the Practitioner's Guide or this section in general before I move on. I can't see the chat, Tim, so I don't know.
No worries. Yes, no, there are three, three things just to pick up. So kind of, so Graham and Keith. So Graham, just on your, your, your point around email management, you're absolutely right. Yes, email management is not specific to gov.uk domains. You can also get email accounts, you know, professionally set up within other domains. That's, email accounts owned by the councils is something that we're kind of encouraging as part of moving across to gov.uk domains. But you're right, that, that's not to, you know, there are benefits, that is a set of benefits that you can get outside of gov.uk. You've both asked about Ionos, which is one of the major providers. So they're not on the, they're not approved registrars, as they're called, which, as they're called, which means that they're not able to set up gov.uk domains, I believe. But that long list is managed by the registry nominate. I can certainly check, you sort of say, how up to date is the list? It should be up to date. I'd be surprised if it's not sort of, you know, totally live. But I can certainly check. Again, if you want to pass through a specific one, I can, I can pass on to the, to the, the team that manages the registry to make sure that that is up to date. And, and finally, just Keith, on your kind of more general question, as in, can you continue working with a local company to manage the day-to-day content on the website? Yes, we'll talk about that later. But certainly, you could just get your domain, your gov.uk domain from an approved registrar. And then you can connect up and, you know, work with them using your existing website. That, that's certainly, that's certainly possible. And we will talk about that a bit more later. And then Martin, who would be the administrator for parish council emails using gov.uk? So I would, probably your clerk, I would say. But that's not something specific to gov.uk, kind of linked to Graham's questions, Graham's point. You know, if you're setting up professional email accounts, it's a kind of a similar setup, whether you do it for .org.uk or .gov.uk. There are a couple of security criteria that you need to meet if you're going to do it in gov.uk. But the usual setup is that you'd have the IT company set up the accounts or give the clerk a login that they can use to set up and manage the email accounts themselves. And Sharon says, please can you confirm that when a parish councillor leaves a council, their emails are retained by the council for the future? Yes, it's the sort of thing that you can definitely get in writing from the company that you're asking to set up, to, to provide the email services for you. But certainly, the expectation would be that you can retain access to the, you can retain the account. That's part, one of the key benefits is that the councillor isn't necessarily taking all the information with them. The council maintains and manages, retains ownership of its information. Sorry, threw a few questions out there, just the things that have come through. And sorry, a final one from Liz. Website is self-hosted WordPress site. Can gov.uk work with this type of site? Yes, but it is worth having a conversation. When you are looking to set up the gov.uk domain and you're speaking to an approved registrar about it, they will need to take a look at your website and check that it meets some sort of key security criteria. So if it's a, if it's a very shaky website, which has got some gaping holes in it, then they might say, these probably need to be patched or sorted out before we link you up to a gov.uk domain. But that shouldn't be anything too onerous or burdensome. Okay, so I think hopefully that covers most of the questions. Please do, you know, keep posting them in. Sandra, shall we move on?
Yeah, of course. So in this next section, we're going to talk about how to get a .gov.uk domain and how the Parish Council Domains Helper Service can help. So last year, we worked with a group of parish councils and approved registrars to ask what they thought the key challenges of moving to a .gov.uk domain were. As a result, the current Parish Council Domains Helper Service was designed to either remove or mitigate these challenges and provide practical help for parish councils to move successfully to a .gov.uk domain. This year, our service includes a series of virtual sessions or workshops, which have all been designed to take people through each step of the process, not full of technical jargon. And hopefully attendees will find the content and format accessible and easy to understand. We make them interactive with plenty of opportunity to ask questions. Each one of the sessions comes with its own guide. And these are full of practical information, tips, checklists and templates on a sent out after each session. The sessions and guides have all been designed to help you work with your council to reach an informed decision about moving over to a .gov.uk domain, find the right approved registrar for your council's needs and budget, understand the services such as email or website that a council might want to consider in addition to their domain, and also provide some practical help with domain setup and building and maintaining good practices. So for example, this might include the checks and tests a council should do before going live with your new domain and how to tell your community about the change. So these sessions run across the months and are all virtual. We try to offer a wide variety of dates and times to suit different working patterns. At the moment, we also offer an informal drop-in session where you can join a call to ask any specific questions that you might be puzzling over. As a quick aside about these sessions, anyone's welcome to come along, clerks and councillors. And attendance does not come with any obligation to move to a .gov.uk domain. It's just good to think about them as fact-finding missions to find out more so that your council can make an informed decision and can move over successfully. I want to make quite an important point about the level of support that we have just talked about. So the Domains Helper Service in its current form, that is with hands-on practical support, is available at support councils that move to .gov.uk in this financial year, so up until the end of March 2025. We expect that this will change at the beginning of the new financial year. And at this point, we think that it's likely that the service and support will shift to become more online with a focus on step-by-step self-help. So if you're a council that's looking for hands-on support, then we urge you to engage in this financial year. It really is a great time to take advantage of the practical advice and support that's available to you from the team. Okay, I know there's probably a few questions in there, but I'm going to crack on and we'll come to the questions in a moment. We've got another little pause. I'm going to talk to you next about the technical support that's available to move to a .gov.uk domain. And that's the support that's provided by .gov.uk approved registrars. So Tim alluded to this just a moment ago, but just in case anyone is not sure, let me explain what I mean by an approved registrar. So domain registrars are companies that can set up a new domain for you. So as we talked about earlier, Ionos and GoDaddy are examples well known in the market. As well as setting up new domains, domain registrars nearly always offer related services like building or hosting websites or providing emails. Accredited domain registrars that are able to set up .gov.uk domains are called approved registrars. There are more than 170 approved registrar companies in the UK that can do this for you. But with this number, it's not easy to know which one to choose and which ones will provide the kind of support that parish councils need. So to help with this, we have created a shortlist of about 24 or so .gov.uk approved registrars who all have experience in working with parish councils and that have all committed to providing an enhanced level of support as part of the Domains Helper Service. So they're people from the 170 or so who've put their hands up to say that they're happy to commit to an enhanced level of service for this particular initiative. So this enhanced support includes active handholding through the entire process, including service and device setup. Acting as your technical point of contact, essentially managing the domain on your behalf and doing anything related to security. And they will also ensure continuity of service. So you won't lose anything or suffer any downtime when moving to your future setup. They also help ensure compliance for any requirements in the Practitioner's Guide. And then lastly, they have provided parish councils with access to government funding. And we'll talk a little bit more about funding in a moment. The service across the year has been really busy and we have been really pleased to see such a high level of engagement with .gov.uk domains. To give you a bit of a flavour of the levels of engagement, Tim has some headline figures. Let me just move on for you.
Yes, thanks, Sandra. Yes, this is our, this is our Spotify wrapped for the year. So in the Parish Council Domains Helper Service, we've, we have nearly 1,000 parish councils who have moved over to gov.uk domains this calendar year so far. And an even larger group of over 1,700 who've been in touch with us, you know, either to ask questions or to come along to one of our, one of our guidance sessions that Sandra was talking through earlier. And in terms of impact, that means that, you know, over, what, 900 exactly websites are now gov.uk websites. And also well over 7,000 email addresses have been, have been created within gov.uk. So that's created for clerks and councillors. And that really indicates a great improvement from the, the stat below that, where two thirds of those were previously free accounts owned by individual councillors. So that represents a real improvement in information management and security of parish councils across England. So next, I'd just like to talk about funding. So I think there was a question around the £100 that was, that is available. So just go through this. So at the start of the financial year, we had funding of £100 plus VAT to help 1,000 councils to offset the initial costs of moving over to a gov.uk domain or buying additional services like emails or website if councils already had gov.uk domains. That funding is finite and it's not going to be available in future years. So at first, that target of 1,000 councils seems quite a challenge. But as you've seen from the last slide, we've had some really good engagement over the year, which has driven quite high demand for that funding, particularly in the last few months. So as of today, we've got more than, more than 85% of the available funding has been allocated. And this is increasing on a daily basis. So let's look at this in terms of how many councils we're still able to support. So as of today, we're still able to allocate funding to 147 more councils. But this figure is, is changing all the time. So in the last two weeks, and we've moved from 70% of the budget being allocated to 85%. And if this, if this kind of pace continues, then we expect to have fully allocated the budget by early January next year, depending on engagement over the, over the Christmas period. So if your council would still like to apply for the funding, then you will need to move very quickly. And we can't really guarantee that the funding will be available at this stage. However, having said all that around that funding, there is, I would say, better news, excellent news that we can share about gov.uk costs, which more than offsets the end of this one-off support, which I'll just talk through on the next slide. And going in and talking about costs more generally. and going in and talking about costs more generally. So as you may know, in the past, gov.uk domains have been more expensive than other domains such as .org.uk or .co.uk domains. So we've taken action to change that. And as of June this year, central government has managed to reduce the, what we call wholesale cost of gov.uk domains by 70%, sorry, by 80%. By wholesale, what we mean is the price that the approved registrars can buy a gov.uk domain before they then add on any markup for their services to get it set up for you. So it's important to say that the approved registrars operate in a commercial marketplace. So the exact price of a domain to you varies depending on which company you use. Prices for a domain seem to range from about £10 to £30 a year and upwards. Or even some registrars are actually offering them free as part of a bundle. For example, if you get your website from them too, then you'll get the domain for free. Essentially, this means the cost of a gov.uk domain is now comparable to any other domain, whether that's .co.uk or .org.uk. And this is an ongoing year-on-year cost reduction. So ultimately, it's a more important change than the £100 of funding which we've been running. So as mentioned, it's £10 to £30 roughly and upwards per, per year, depending on which company you go with. That's compared with, it was, it was triple figures just for the wholesale cost in previous years. So, so it's a big reduction in costs for a gov.uk domain. So taking this into account, how much does it cost overall to set yourself up in a gov.uk domain? So the cost will vary a lot depending on whether you just want the domain or whether you want other online services as well, like a new website, for example, or email accounts for, for, for all of your council. So for example, if your council just wants a gov.uk domain and an email address for the clerk, that will cost less than another council that wants a domain, a new website and emails for all of the councils, councillors and staff. So it's a bit difficult to say exactly how much it's going to cost. It depends on the services that you want and it also depends on the company that you use, which I'll come back to. So just looking at websites then. If you want to move to gov.uk and you have a good, secure existing website, then you can keep your website and you can get your current website provider to work with your new approved registrar to essentially connect up your existing website to your new gov.uk domain. And this should cost little to nothing. Alternatively, if you want or if you need to get a new website for your parish council, that will, that will cost more in that, you know, you'll need to get that set up and you can get that set up by the approved registrar or by a separate company if you want. Prices for new websites vary a lot depending on which company you go with. As a rough example, upfront costs can be £200 to £400, maybe £200 to £500. And then annual hosting and ongoing management costs, maybe, you know, £100 to £300 a year, depending on what kind of support you might need. I will just say those are kind of generic suggestions on costs for websites. That's not specific to gov.uk. That's just, you know, paying for setup and management of a website. So that's, that's the website costs. And then emails then. This is one of the key costs for councils when they're looking at setting themselves up online. And this may be a new cost if they're trying to move away from free council-owned email addresses. Sorry, councillor-owned email addresses, I meant. So when councillors have individual free email accounts that they've set up. So again, the cost of emails will depend on the option you choose. And I think this, this question links to, this, this point links to one of the questions in the, in the chat. So for example, if you go with industry leaders like Microsoft or Google, those will come with a suite of tools and features and costs will go from roughly £4 to £10 per user per month, which can be quite difficult for small precepts, but obviously brings a lot of functionality with it. Alternatively, there are simpler webmail services which have basic functionality and can cost a lot less. There are approved registrars who can provide email services like this and those can range from as little as £50 a year in total for everyone at a small council. So about five to six email addresses. And then there are also companies that can bundle these up and you can get a domain, new website and emails as a single price. Just to reiterate, these costs for emails and websites are not specific to gov.uk domains. They're common to any professional website and email setup, whatever domain you're in. So just to say, there's a marketplace out there and although we're trying, we, we try to give advice as, as much as we can, but it is complicated. There are many providers and it depends on what services you want to get. So some key points just from that slide around costs. Firstly, if you're looking to move across, make sure that you think through what services your council needs in terms of your domain, your website, emails. Secondly, and we can't really stress this enough, the importance of getting quotes, talking to peers at other councils and shopping around to find the right approved registrar for your council's needs and budget. And third, just to say, we do talk more about the services that you might want and costs in the sessions that we want, run with parish councils after you register with the Domains Helper Service. So I'd recommend you come along to one of those sessions if you're interested in moving over. Right, that was quite a lot of information to take in. Shall we just have a brief pause to catch up with questions? So Graham, sadly, some of the approved registrars are smaller niche players without anything like the resilience of the ma- major hosting providers. I'm not sure. I, I mean, they, they do sort of have to meet cyber essentials as standard, which does include business continuity requirements. And there are also some fairly large companies in that long list of providers. So, but you know, ultimately, these are all decisions for your, for your council to take. So absolutely, you set out the requirements for the security measures and for the information management, management measures you want in place for your council and, and go with your, go with your, your decision-making on that. Sharon, what is the impact if a minority of councillors refuse to use a gov.uk address? Again, I mean, that is something for the council to manage. We do talk a little bit later about some suggestions for good practice, including email management. I would say trying to make it easy as possible for the councillors might help. So for example, making sure that if they've got an existing email address that they use, try to make sure they can access their new gov.uk email in the same app or the same programme. That's usually possible and it might make it a little easier for them to get used to managing two different email addresses. But we will talk, to talk about that a little bit later. And then Charlotte, if you need to switch to Microsoft Office and your councillors do, will the approved registrar sort it? Certainly, there are approved registrars who are able to set up Microsoft accounts for you. Yep. Equally, you can work with a different IT company and just use the approved registrar for the domain. But certainly, there are approved registrars who can set up accounts, Microsoft accounts on your behalf. Sandra, anything else we need to cover? I don't know if you've got, well, quite a few questions in the, in the Q and A panel. Question from Dave, is the funding available in Wales? I'm, I'm afraid not. So because it's a devolved area, our sort of scope has been specifically looking at parish councils across parish town and any community councils across England, I'm afraid. But obviously happy to help and provide guidance as we can. Jackie, what is the full cost of changing to gov.uk? Hopefully, I've answered that question in that it depends on the services that you want and it depends which company you go with. But we have tried to give some indications, certainly on the cost of the domain itself and some indications on websites and emails. I think the first important step is understanding which services you really want and then you can get quotes to, to understand what, what companies will, will do that for you for... Slightly odd question, uh, sentence there, sorry. And then, and then a longer question. Sandra, shall we carry on? I could maybe sort of try and answer some of these in the background if that would help.
Yeah, okay, perfect. So let's move on my slide deck. So in this next section, we talk about what happens after you've moved over to a .gov.uk domain, how you can make the most of your new domain. Whilst we're focusing on .gov.uk domains in this webinar, these simple steps that all follow in this next section, it doesn't matter if you're using .org.uk or .co.uk or .com. Good practice will keep your online presence safe, accessible and with the council's control. So Tim, we've got another quick poll about data security before we move on. I'm gonna move to this one. So who is responsible for protecting your council's data? So you'll see a list, a list of suggested answers in the poll. So the answers we have are the clerk, the chair, IT providers, everyone at the council or your community. Just vote as you did before, so I can see everyone is voting now. So moving along, about 60, 64% have already participated, thank you. Just wait a few minutes more. So it seems to have stabilised, so I'm going to go for like just a few seconds more to get your answers in. Okay. I think Tim has now closed the poll. So we've got some various answers here. So we've got about 30 or so percent saying the clerk, just a few people saying the chair and then our IT providers and everyone at the council. And a few people have said that, that, that your community is responsible for safeguarding the data they access. So actually, those people who answered everyone at the council, which 65% of you are absolutely correct. The answer to this question is everyone in the council is responsible for protecting its data and communications. Aside from its legal obligations, the council should be conscious of the ramifications of a data loss or breach and they should work to prevent them. And I think as we all know, this trust and a good reputation takes work to build but can be lost very quickly. So let's have a look at the simple ways that you can protect your council. I'm gonna go down here and I'm gonna move on. So protecting your council. So we recommend that everyone in your council understands good cyber practice. For example, everyone should know how to recognise scams and phishing emails. They should know how to set up strong passwords. And they should also be thinking about using multi-factor authentication. Always put an F in there, I don't know why, authentication to log into email. If this is something that you think your council could do with some help with, then we should, we would like to direct you to the National Cyber Security Centre. There's some really great help out there from the experts, which includes a top tips for staff training course. It covers defending yourself from phishing, how to set up strong passwords, how to secure your devices and how to report incidents. It's free and easily accessible from their website as well as just a small action. Whatever your domain you're using, we would encourage everyone at a council to engage with this, no matter what their role. And as an aside, there's actually some really great advice for home users. So like even, even if you're just using stuff at home, it's good to log on to NCSE and pick up one of their little courses. So we also recommend that cybersecurity and data protection remains a topic that has a regular spot on your meeting agendas and your internal communications. By creating an open forum for conversation, you're giving everyone an opportunity to raise concerns early, creating top-of-mind awareness about cybersecurity and also ensuring that if anyone does make a mistake, click on a link, for example, then they will feel comfortable that they can come forward and discuss it, rather than try and pretend it hasn't happened. We also suggest having a simple IT policy in place. This will help set out the rules and standards for everyone to follow. Doesn't have to be complicated, but it should cover the essentials such as how data should be stored and managed or what is considered acceptable use of the council's IT resources. Making it clear and making it concise and easy to follow is really important. That way, it will be easy to adopt by everyone, no matter their IT capabilities. And of course, the council should make sure that everyone understands and signs up to the policy. It doesn't matter if people use their own devices for council work, the policy should still apply. If you're a small council, you might think that an IT policy sounds a little bit over the top. But having something like this in place will help everyone to understand and observe good practice. If it's written down and everyone has a copy and they've signed up to, there's no, there's no excuse for misunderstanding. And it makes everyone else aware of what they should and shouldn't be doing. If you're interested, the Parish Council Domains Helper Service has a simple example template we can send you to help. We're more than happy to give you access to that. So I'm going to talk about accessibility next and we have a quick poll around accessibility. So Tim, back over to you. So this one is a simple true or false question and it's around new accessibility guidelines. So what, so the question is, new accessibility guidelines will mean, will mean wide-ranging changes for our council websites. What does everyone think about this? So we've got true and false jogging for first place here. So we've got about three-quarters now have answered. So just give people a few more seconds to respond before we close. So it seems pretty stable at the moment. Maybe people are pausing. True or false, true or false? Okay, Tim, do you want to close the poll? Okay, thanks everybody. So we've got about 32% have said this is true. Now about 68% have answered false. So if you are on the false answer, then that is absolutely correct. We are aware that there's been some advertising that's been circulating recently suggesting that radical changes may be required to a council's website to be compliant. But in reality, the new accessibility guidelines only affect quite complicated websites. For example, if your website has long forms which need to be filled in or if you have dragable interfaces on your website. But this is really unlikely to be the case for parish council websites. That said, accessibility regulations are relevant for all councils. So regardless of whether you're on .gov.uk or not, you need to make sure your website is accessible. So we have some, oh, I forgot to move on the questions. So we have some simple guidelines to help you with this. So let me move on to talk a little bit more about that. So this is all about making your website accessible. So according to the Department of Work and Pensions, one in five people in the UK has a disability. That's about 16 million people. If we fail to meet accessibility standards, which we are not, we are not only failing to meet our legal obligations, but we are also failing a good proportion of our communities. Every council has a legal obligation to meet accessibility standards, ensuring that every member of their community has equal access to the council's online information and services. But legal obligation is only one aspect of this. It's also about a duty of care for each council. So we suggest you take the time to make sure your website is compliant by doing a simple accessibility check. There is a very straightforward guide on gov.uk which you can follow and it also gives guidance on simple changes you can make to your website, which can have a really big impact. Keeping your accessibility statement up to date is another important step. This statement should tell visitors to your website about any areas which are not easily accessible and should also provide contact details for your websites so they can request resources in different formats. For example, PDFs are not really your friend when it comes to accessibility. They cannot be easily scanned and read by software. So making documents available in read-only word format, for example, can open up your council's information to a wider section of your community. Again, we have a really simple accessibility statement for you to adapt if you need it. Just drop us an email and we can pass it over. So there's lots of training out there if you need it. The gov.uk The gov.uk site will help and representative bodies like NALC will also help and hold guidance. So time for another poll, Tim. And I'm gonna hand the slide deck over to you. So it's another true or false. So have a good read of the statement and select your answer as before. This one is free emails are exactly what they say, they are free. Let's see what everyone's answered.
That's great. Can you see the poll?
Yes.
I think you're still on the last poll. Yeah, sorry.
Though I can see this poll, but I can't.
I'm not sure what's happened.
So we've got fifty-nine people have responded to it, so other people must be up to see it.
Okay. I think I'm still showing the previous one. There we go, there we go, there we go. Now I can. There we go. I think that's now launched. Free emails are exactly, thank you, great. Now it's there. Sorry, I'm multitasking fail. I was sort of trying to go through questions and things. I've got multiple windows open, but hopefully that's making sense now I can see responses coming in. That's brilliant. Okay, I think we're probably coming up to give it a couple more seconds. So yes, I'll close that off in a second. So yes, this is about free emails that individuals might be setting up to use for council business. Just share the answers there. So about two thirds have gone with false and one third have gone with true. So when it comes to financial cost, you know, then yes, it's true that you won't be paying a monthly fee for these kind of email services. However, it is worth noting that, you know, free emails do come with a cost which is your data. A lot of providers do use email scanning for ad personalisation in exchange for providing these services for free. So that kind of segues into our next section, which is about control then. And again, this builds on something that we mentioned earlier in terms of the benefits of having email management. Sandra, next slide if you don't mind. Thanks. So yes, we emphasise the benefits of having council-owned emails for all colleagues and this allows the council to manage joiners and leavers easily. It's good for managing freedom of information requests and it means that people, you know, can't walk away with their email addresses and all of the information in them. You know, there was a question in the chat about that. So effectively, it allows the council to keep control and ownership of council information within emails. Having said that, a common concern that we do hear from councillors is that, you know, they've already got multiple email addresses possibly, you know, and they've got a if they then have a separate council-specific email address, they'll end up having multiple inboxes in different places. So one thing we do just mention is that it is usually possible to set it up so that you can get all of your different email accounts coming into one app or programme. And there was a question around POP3 and the IMAP as well. We do allow that for gov.uk emails and there's no restriction about that. So for example, if you use Outlook, you can connect two different inboxes and check them both from within the Outlook programme. And when you send out an email, you can choose which account you're going to be emailing from. You can do the same with the Gmail app or really with any other email app that you're used to. So if this is something that, you know, you want to explore or which you think might help some of the councillors in your council to be more on side with gov.uk, then it's worth having a look at, maybe speak with the clerk or with your IT supplier to help make sure that this can get set up for them. And then the final box here then, document storage. We haven't really spoken about document storage, but a lot of the councils that we've had questions from, what we've spoken with, they've set up cloud storage accounts owned by the council, which means that documents can be saved in an area which the council controls. And then you can share them, you can collaborate them amongst colleagues and then you don't have lots of different attachments, separate files flying around. You can do this within your own domain in that you can ask, for example, your approved registrar if they offer document storage, which would mean that all of your files will be within your parishcouncil.gov.uk. Or you can do this via a third party company like, you know, companies like Dropbox or Pcloud or Google Drive. You know, there are lots of options. And having this kind of document storage is worth considering as again, it means that your council is keeping control and ownership of your council's information. Any questions? So I have been trying to pick up questions in the chat. Is it worth, Sandra, shall we keep moving maybe till the end and then pick them all up?
Yeah, we'll pick them all up at the end. Okay.
Great. So we'll just cover, we're nearly at the end here, we're at the point on how you can get involved. So firstly, if you are interested in moving across to a gov.uk domain or if you want to find out more, Sandra, do you mind just moving to the next slide, sorry?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Thanks. If you want to find out more or if you're interested in moving across, then you can register with the Parish Council Domains Helper Service and sign up for one of our sessions. It will cover some of the topics that we've been through today, but it will go into a bit more detail around service options and costs. Just to reiterate, there's no obligation to move forward with a gov.uk domain by attending. Usually, we see clerks at these sessions. They're often the ones who are likely to be doing the practical work to move over, but we're very, very happy for any member of a council to attend. And sometimes where you've got a particularly IT savvy councillor, they'll be the ones driving it forward. Leading on from this, we suggest that you start a conversation with your council colleagues, find out what the appetite for moving across to a gov.uk domain might be, what concerns there are with the current ways of working, what their thoughts are on a gov.uk domain and whether it's the right thing for you. We also recommend talking about the services that you might want to get and potentially the budget that's available for this. All of these conversations will then stand you in good stead when it comes to talking to approved registrars. So you'll know what to ask, what information you need and where to look for reassurance. We do send out a guide following off that first virtual session, which will help you to have these conversations. After the session today, this will answer a few questions in the chat. After the session now, we'll be dropping Anders a note with all the links that you'll need to register for one of the sessions and a couple of the, you know, we're happy to share these slides as well. In terms of the sessions, there are plenty of dates and times to choose from. Or if you do have a specific question, you can simply email us at the address at the bottom of the slide in the green lozenge. So that's all for the webinar today. It's been a bit of a whistle stop tour, but hopefully it's given you a flavour of the benefits of a gov.uk domain and how to get the most of it once you have one. Now, just to pick up on questions, and so a few things have been coming in. There was one question about from Catherine. So where you have a community website, a village website, which the parish council has a part of. And this is, you know, as you can imagine, it does happen a fair amount. And I guess that there are two, there are two main options. So you could look to move that whole community website into a gov.uk domain if you wanted to. But what I would just say is that, so it's fine to have non-council information there, but the parish council will effectively own the domain, it will own the information that's on there and you'll need to be comfortable with who you give access to. Because if, you know, you're giving access to lots of people in the community who are not associated with the parish council, you know, if they're putting information on there, that might be a bit of a risk to the council. Oh, sorry, I didn't share the results. I just saw the, there we go, on the true or false. So yes, that's a kind of a point there. Alternatively, as you said, you could set up a separate website in gov.uk just for the parish council and then you could kind of connect it to the community website as a separate site. There were a couple of questions around having access to the IT policy template and also the shortlist of approved registrars. Sandra, maybe if we just pick up after this and work out what we can send through to Anders, you know, maybe like the IT policy template, we can just attach to be shared if people want to get that directly. Also, I did put a note in the chat about this, but Fiona just asking if we have an existing website and we want to get a gov.uk domain from an approved registrar, does that mean we'll be paying both? Short answer is yes, you will need to be paying two companies, but it's not really duplicated cost because, you know, you'll need to be paying for a domain separate from, you know, as well as a website anyhow. But there are benefits potentially in having, you know, one company manage the domain and the website. If you're very happy with your existing website, you could maybe talk to your website provider and ask if they would sort out the gov.uk domain for you by going to a different company and setting it up via them. It's a conversation that you could have with them, but ultimately it will have to be an approved registrar setting up the domain. And then there was a comment on the long list of providers. It would be useful if their links. Absolutely, that makes sense. Thanks, Brian, for that. I'll pass that on that we got that comment. It's something that we've mentioned to them previously before as well, the team that manages that list. So yes, that's a good point to emphasise with them. And then Chris, please remind me exactly what services a registrar provides. The name registrar means that they are setting up domains for people. Approved registrars are ones which are able to set up a gov.uk domain. And then nearly all registrars offer other related services. So that's setting up email addresses if you want within your domain, setting up a website for you and hosting it within that domain if you want that. And often, a lot of them will provide document storage as well within that domain. So those are the sort of services that you'll be able to request from them, either partly or in full. Neville, we are one of many councils who use northumberlandparishes.uk. Would they set up what we need? I don't know, I'm afraid, Neville. That is something to take up with them. Happy to, if you want to put us in touch with them, happy for that, but I can't answer that, I'm afraid. Anything that I have missed? The list of twenty-four companies, again, that's something that we can look to share after this and the IT policy template. Slides and templates, happy to share. Can we set up a gov.uk email without changing the website domain? Yes, that is possible. I know some councils have set up a gov.uk domain and they're using that just for their email addresses and then their website is in a different domain. I think that's particularly happening where their website is possibly being provided by, for example, like dorsetparishes.gov.uk, for example, where, you know, someone is like the ALG perhaps is setting up a service or, you know, has historically set up a service for parish councils, but they want to have their own emails. I would say that it's ideally, you would have your website and your emails in the same domain to reduce any kind of confusion and make it easier to manage. But certainly, it's technically possible to have two different domains that you're working through. And then any restrictions on gov.uk being used for commercial activities? There aren't too many restrictions. You can have commercial activities which are related to your council. The only restrictions really are if you can't start having like advertising banners and things on gov.uk websites. You know, no sort of Bedford banners or anything like that. But otherwise, you can have local services provided.
I'm just conscious of time, Tim. So we've got one last poll before we leave you. So I'm just gonna move over the slide, Tim, if you're okay to manage the poll. We already dealt with that question. So after today's session, how likely are you to find out more or move over to a .gov.uk domain? So these are the answers. So my council is planning to move to a .gov.uk domain. I'm keen, but my council needs convincing. We need to find out more before we move. We are not likely to move to a .gov.uk, there's the big unsure label. And then this does not apply to my council. So if you can just let us know, that'd be great. Just gives us a gauge to see how people are feeling afterwards. So just a few more seconds.
I think we're nearly there.
Yeah.
Right, ninety percent. That's brilliant. Okay, I think that's reached that.
Yep, perfect. Thank you very much. So we've got twenty percent of people saying yes, they're going to move over. I don't know if you want to share the, I suppose, and share it. We've got some people saying they're keen, but my council needs convincing. So please do come along to one of our sessions and we can share the guides with you. And in those guides are some really helpful tips about opening conversations about .gov.uk domain, which will hopefully help you have informed conversations with everybody. Need to find out more, exactly the same stance, please come along to one of our sessions. We'll be sending you some information out after this as well. A few people saying they're not likely to, and that's entirely your prerogative. We understand that for some people it's not a move. And there's still a little bit of a few people who are not sure. Thank you so much for coming along to today's session. We really, really appreciate it. If there's been some questions that we haven't answered today, drop us an email at this address. We are really happy to answer individual questions. I think someone's already sent one over and we're glad to answer all those. And as I said, I'll drop Anders an email after this with all the bits and pieces that we have promised. So I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and it just leaves me to say thanks very much and I hope the rest of your week goes well.